But we need to figure out when the day is because that's what Preston was saying. It was tomorrow morning at four.
Well, I guess it's time to start, isn't it? I'll quit reading and get going here. We'll call this meeting to order of the City Council. If you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Guess I was waiting for a few more people to come for some reason. We need to start with a roll call. Ms. Harris, will you help us with that?
Councilmember Perks is asking.
We do have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. We have an agenda before us. We do need to consider an addition to that agenda. Resolution 2370 regarding a change order for the City Hall roof replacement project. So if someone would like to make a motion to approve the agenda with that addition. Thank you. Mr. Sellers with the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Lynch, seconding. Any discussion? If none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Are there any opposed? We have an agenda. We have the City Council minutes for September 5th. Any concern regarding those? If not, we will acknowledge those as they've been prepared and go on to the special City Council minutes for September 12th. Any concerns with those? If not, we'll acknowledge those as well and we'll go on to the bills. I don't want to register today's date on it. If we do have questions, Trudy is next door in the room next door with the auditors. If there's questions, we can summon her back over here, but... Any questions on the bills? If there is none, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Lind with the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Lynch, seconding. Discussion. If there is none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Takes care of the bills. Council comments. Mr. Lynch, it's on.
Nothing tonight, there.
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Willing?
I have nothing.
Sellers?
Just one quick thing. It's Suicide Prevention Month this month, and I'll be sure to mention it earlier in the month, but be mindful of those who are in need. There's a lot of stress in people's lives right now, and a lot of people are going through a lot, and sometimes being a friend and just being able to talk to somebody and give somebody a smile makes a difference in their lives.
Ms. Hegman?
Just for all you hunters out there, there is a reminder of food from field is a new program, and it allows you to donate your meat to families in need. There are a lot this year, and it was very successful last year, according to the statistic. Twenty thousand pounds worth of game was donated for families in need. And we sit in one of the hunting capitals of the world, and we celebrate that, and being able to feed the less needy is just a bonus on all those nights up there in the cold. So if you have extra, think about donating them to food from the field.
Excellent. Thank you. I don't think I have anything to add, and so we'll move on to our public hearings. The special orders, we do have an appointment. Osana Giorgio has expressed a willingness and a desire to serve on our tree board, and there happens to be a vacancy on that, and so I'd like to bring forth her name to serve on the tree board. Now, I don't...I guess I don't know...when would that appointment expire? Do you know off the top of your head? Is it a three-year?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Is it a three-year term or...
It's a three-year term. Isn't it the...
For a three-year term. If somebody would like to make a motion to that effect.
Make that motion.
Mr. Sellers? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Lynch? Seconding. Any discussion?
I'm reading the letter here, but it's...
Yes.
Can anybody tell me any more about this person?
Dwayne, can you tell us about Ms. Giorgio? Or do you...whatever you might know.
I have her information here, but I believe she is from the East Coast area, and she's very well educated in tree care and maintenance. Yeah, I'm reading her request on the tree board and information that she provided.
Sounds like a good fit.
She'd be a good resource.
So you'd be the reference we'd refer to? You would be the reference we would refer to? Yes.
Just go along with it. You know, we have...these kinds of boards, oftentimes we have a difficult time finding people who are willing to be on a city board of any kind. Truly, lots of times they're fairly thankless positions, and so I...it sounds to me like she would be a good fit. Honestly, I don't know her, but I think she's expressed an interest, and it sounds to me like she'd be a good fit, so...
Perfect.
Why not? Why not give her a shot?
Perfect.
Any further discussion? If there is none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That appointment is made, and we'll appreciate her service. We'll go on to our consent agenda. We have two items there. A request from the high school for the homecoming parade, typical as usual, looks like, and a street closure from Kate's for the fifth annual fall Main Street Bash Cornhole Tournament. I think they've held that, again, fifth annual, so they've had that for quite a while, too. Is there any...is there a motion to approve our consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Motion? Is there a second? Mr. Sellers, seconding. Any discussion?
The date.
The date of...
The homecoming parade, this says the 20th, the website... This says the 20th, the website says the 29th.
Oh, it is the 29th. That's my fault.
It's that Friday, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the website says the actual parade is from 4:00 to 5:00, so probably...
I know, and the parade permit, they turned in, says 3:00. I didn't change it.
Yeah.
So that's what they put up there.
Well, I think they probably want to start a little bit early. I have tried to contact the student council rep to make sure that we're registered and stuff. I haven't heard back from her yet, so...
I didn't hear back from her either.
I'll keep trying.
Okay.
Any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Takes care of our consent agenda. Unfinished business. Ordinance 2305. Mr. Harris, please.
Grown members of the council, ordinance 23-05, an ordinance to the city of Evanston, Wyoming, annexing the real property more particularly described herein is requested in the petition to annex submitted by GTR Property Holdings LLC, a Utah limited liability company. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is on third and final reading.
Thank you. Mr. Jacobson?
Yes, we've kind of gone through this quite a bit, so it is 1.62 acres of unincorporated land that we have within the corporate boundary of our city, located abutting Wasatch Road on the north side of Wasatch Road, and the landowner is looking to annex that portion into the city. He does own some property just to the east of there, that little T-shaped area, and that larger piece just north of the T-shaped area, and will likely see a request for a zone change, and he'll be looking at possible residential development in that area.
Excellent.
No changes?
Nothing changed from the beginning? I didn't see anything before, so... Sounds good. We've...Councilmember Perks was our sponsor for this ordinance. Again, this is third and final reading. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Ordinance 2305 on third reading.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Lind? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Lynch, seconding. Discussion. If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That is approved on third and final reading. Thank you. We'll go on to new business. Resolution 2365. Mr. Harris, will you read that title for us, please?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, resolution 2365 is a resolution approving and authorizing the final plat for the Burn Coal Edition, a subdivision within the city of Evanston, Wyoming, as more particularly described herein. This matter requires introduction and a motion to pass.
Thank you. Mr. Jacobson, please.
Yes, Mayor and council. This is the Burn Coal Edition. It is located in the Grass Valley subdivision. It's on the southern half end of Grass Valley Drive. Just to the north of there, intersecting streets would be Hayden Avenue East. Just...it's located off the map that's shown on the screen, and Sagewood Road, which is just down to the south. So both of these lots have been developed. As you can see, there's a house. The foundation has been built upon. There's a house on that property, 560 Grass Valley Drive. What they are proposing to do is adjust the property boundary between the two lots. Now, this is a little bit different than what we normally do. Normally, we would review this through the lot line adjustment process, but the title company, U.N. Engineering, as their representative, has requested that we review this as a minor subdivision, as an addition to the city. So that's why we're going through this process with this one. So the gold lines are the property boundaries as they currently are. Lot number 46 to the north has about a 10-foot strip or so along the back end of lot 568, and the new lot line that they're proposing is to...lot 2 of the Burn Coal Edition will give lot 1 that back 10-foot area, and then they're picking up an additional land, so it's kind of a land swap between the two. They're...as far as the lot area, they're still ending up with a similar-sized lot. This area is owned medium-density residential. Minimum lot size requirement in this zone is 6,000 square feet. We got 11,000-plus square feet for lot 2 and 9,000 square feet plus for lot 1, so they do meet the minimum requirements for a zoning district. There is an existing shed that's located...I think I'll go back here. So there's an existing shed that's located around this area here. It's a new shed. And with this lot line adjustment, it does pull the lot line over, so they will need to relocate that shed. They're aware of that, and comply with the five-foot setback, so that shed will be pulled down onto lot 1.
What was the purpose of the flag? The flag lot on the northern lot? What was that? That's...yeah, right there. What was the purpose of that? Do we know?
I don't. Chris Daley, some years ago, he did a lot line adjustment, adding additional property to the back of each lot. This is the only one in that lot line adjustment where he did this kind of flag-shaped lot and took and gave adjacent property owner the back portion. There are no other lots that I saw on the plat that he did this. This is the only one, so it's kind of an odd thing.
Typically, you'd see that in access or something like that, but obviously...
Yeah.
It doesn't do this.
Yeah, to access, but...
Has no bearing on it, just...
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure what his thinking was when he did that, but...
This would remove that flag.
It will.
And give it to the lot to the south.
Is that like a 10-foot wide little section, or what is that?
Yeah, let's see if I...
That right now is...there's an easement, a 10-foot easement, and then about 14, a little over 14 feet on the other side.
Or 14 feet is what they're picking up, and then you got 14 feet on this one here.
Yeah. Okay.
So it's just pretty much uneven.
Just affects these two lots and these two property owners, so long as they're happy with it, I guess.
We've got existing two 10-foot, existing utility easements that exist now with this addition. It proposes to keep the same easement, so no change with those. Our city subdivision review committee has reviewed this subdivision and has expressed no concerns with it. Each lot does have water and sewer services already, since they're already developed, so none of that is needed as we typically require in our minor subdivisions. So staff recommends approval of this addition with the conditions that they remove the shed back onto lot 1 of the Burn Coal Edition, comply with setbacks, and getting...providing the city with a reproducible Mylar copy of the plat, and once we receive that, we will be able to issue any future building permits.
Sounds pretty straightforward. Is there an introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce with a motion to pass.
Mr. Lind with the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Sellers, second. Discussion. Discussion?
Are they going to use that little indent for something?
Yeah, I'm not quite sure what the little indent will be used for, or if there is some utilities there.
That's what I mean.
I haven't been on site. There could be fire hydrant with light there. I'm not sure, but...
Guy that likes straight lines, I don't know. I just...
Straight lines and right angles. Yeah, here you go.
At least they're right. Just a little bit of extra yard to landscape maintain, so...
Further discussion? If there is none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 2366. Mr. Harris, will you read that title for us, please?
Mr. Mayor, a resolution of the city of Evanston, Wyoming, authorizing the execution of a subaward agreement between the highway safety program of the Wyoming Department of Transportation and the Evanston Police Department to receive grant funds for impaired driving enforcement.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor and council, this is our annual renewal of this agreement between ourselves and the state. We use this money for overtime during the holidays to enforce DUIs against drunk driving, and it also helps pay for one of our new in-car cameras that we're acquiring. The new in-car cameras are pretty pricey compared to the old ones, and the old ones are starting to age, and unfortunately, Preston isn't able to secure parts for them anymore, so they're becoming not useful, and the attorneys have grown used to us having in-car cameras, and they get a little upset when we don't have them anymore. So this will help purchase one and then provide additional overtime for the holiday seasons.
Sounds good to me. Is there an introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce with a motion to pass.
Mr. Lynch, the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Sellers, seconding. Discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved. Thank you. Resolution 2367. Mr. Harris, please.
A resolution of the city of Evanston, Wyoming, authorizing the execution of a subaward agreement between the highway safety program of the Wyoming Department of Transportation and the Evanston Police Department to receive grant funds for occupant protection.
Seems pretty similar, but...
Yes, it's also an annual renewal agreement. This one is not necessarily concentrated on DUI enforcement, but seatbelt wearing out on the highways. Wyoming does not have a primary seatbelt law. However, if we observe another law being violated, we can pull them over and either cite them for not having an occupant safety restraint for the adults. The kids, there's different laws that apply to the kids. We can automatically stop if we see the little ones bouncing around in the back. This one also is helping us acquire two new radar systems for our patrol vehicles. One also, our fleet is aging a little bit, and some of these parts are breaking, and so we need to have...make sure every vehicle has a radar operational in it.
Okay. Is there an introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce with a motion to pass.
With a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Lind, seconding. Discussion.
These are lengthy.
Yeah.
Dude, like, what did I tell Gary? You gotta read it to me.
If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
Thank you. Resolution 2368. Mr. Harris, read that title for us, please.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, resolution 2368, a resolution of the city of Evanston, Wyoming, authorizing the acceptance of a renewal quote from Planet Technologies, Inc., that incorporates a Microsoft agreement for online services to renew licensing for various computer programs used by the city.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, this is an agreement that we enter into with Planet Technologies every three years. They lock you into pricing for three years at a time, and we have to use a partner to get Microsoft licensing through the government purchasing. So this provides the Microsoft services we need for our online cloud, email, our Microsoft Office products, and other security software that they have with that.
Okay. We've used these for...this company for how long now?
Prior to...probably since...before 2017.
So it's been...
I know...yeah, it's been at least since 2017.
They've been good to work with? They've been attentive to our needs? They've been providing good service?
Yes, they have. And really, the pricing between partners is not...doesn't change much, because I think Microsoft dictates the price with about everything they do.
I see why Bill Gates has got so much money.
Yeah.
Is there an introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce with a motion to pass.
Mr. Lind with a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Sellers, seconding. Discussion. No discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution 2369. Mr. Harris, please.
Mr. Mayor, resolution number 2369, a resolution authorizing submission of an application to the T-Mobile Hometown Grant Program on behalf of the governing body for the city of Evanston, Wyoming, for the Evanston Gateways into Downtown Murial Project.
Mr. Neal?
Mayor and council, Rock O'Neill, Community Development Department. I'm speaking for Mika tonight. She's representing the city at the Wyoming Working Together Conference. Excuse me. So this is her hard work. This is a grant, again, to T-Mobile, requesting $38,000 for between, well, two to three murals in our gateways to our downtown Western theme murals. And as Mika wrote here, the idea is for visitors to understand and get a representation of what Evanston is historically, recreationally, before they even step foot into the downtown. They'll be able to visually see it on the side of a building as they come into the downtown. So our match is $2,500. That comes out of the downtown enhancement line item in our community development budget, and then in-kind matches from the property owners.
And we've identified a few locations. I know Mika and I talked on the phone about this the other day, and we've identified a few potential locations. We may or may not get the grant, but it'd be kind of fun to...I think the mural down in the old...there across from the First Bank has been well-received. I think that's a cool addition to the downtown, so...
Yeah.
I anticipate this would be similar stuff. Any questions before we move on with this?
Just where the other locations are, and are we selecting Wyoming artists who represent us?
Yes. Mika has relationships with...excuse me. My allergies are killing me. Has relationships with other downtown coordinators and directors, and there are Wyoming artists from Laramie and Cheyenne, and hopefully a few from Evanston that we can get quotes from. I can't give you...truthfully, I don't know what buildings are selected. I'm just here to speak for Mika in her absence, so if you have any other questions about particular...
What's the timeframe?
It looks like the grant award announcement is in December, so I imagine, just based on that, getting an artist on board and trying to get those painted by early spring.
I think what she was telling me is that we won't know about the grant until December sometime. We won't know the final...and then, obviously, it'd be weather permitting for the actual...
I'd like to throw somebody into the ring.
Absolutely.
A local Evanston-born-and-raised girl, Stella.
Thompson.
She's the one who did our murals for Queen City Saloon, on the inside and the outside, and she is talented, but she doesn't get back from...she needs to...she's working off of her student loan, teaching art, so I think it would be incredible to have an Evanstonian do the artwork, especially one as talented as she is.
Absolutely. Couldn't agree with you more.
Is there an introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce with a motion to pass.
Mr. Sellers, the motion? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Lind, seconding. Any discussion?
Hope we get it.
What's that?
Hope we get it.
Yes.
We have the best grant writer in the world, so...
Yes, Mika does a fantastic job.
I'm thinking we have a good shot.
Can anticipate success.
Yeah.
If that's all the discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved. Thank you, Rocko, and we'll go on to resolution 2370. Mr. Harris, will you read that title for us, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, resolution 23-70, a resolution of the governing body of the city of Evanston, approving change order number one for the Evanston City Hall Roof Replacement Project in the city of Evanston.
Thank you. Mr. Neal?
Thank you to Mr. Harris and Mrs. Harris for their working, squeezing this in at the last second. When we were redoing our roofs, the roofing company found wet insulation under the decking, and so we just told them to go ahead and replace it. If we're ripping the decks off, we're going to do it right this time and make sure that we don't have to do it again in the near future. So this change order is for replacing some of that rigid insulation under the membrane.
And it's guaranteed not to leak for 40, 50 years? What's the...
I don't know if we can not guarantee a leak. I'm hoping so. They come with a...that was part of our bid, was a 30-year warranty, so...
I've never understood why they put a flat roof in Wyoming, anywhere in Wyoming. It doesn't make...but there's so many... doesn't make, but there's so many of them, you know, but, yeah.
You've got to quit partying on the roof.
Well, I haven't been up there in a long time. I haven't been up there in a long time. Well, is there an introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce with a motion to pass.
Mr. Lynch? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Lynn, seconding. Discussion. If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Comments from departments. Rocco, do you have anything more for us tonight while you're still standing there right there? Okay.
Want to mention your workshop tomorrow?
Oh, yes. Tomorrow, this year, we're going to have a, uh, close fast, uh, last month, um, guitar and piano.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Robinson, you have anything for us tonight?
Uh, last week, we were visited by Wyoming EDQ and the West Quarter Trip Planet, and they did a full inspection of the facility and records, and no issues or violations.
Fantastic.
Good things going on out there.
Excellent. Sounds good. Barker, everything? Ms. Larson? Mr. Pearson, Police Department. Ms. Harris?
No, your honor.
Mr. Harris?
I, just as of interest for the council, I found today while reading Casper Star Tribune an interesting article about a public records lawsuit involving the Wyoming Department of Education. I actually was able to find it and forward it. I hope it came through and forwarded to the clerk like around 5:00 o'clock. She probably hadn't even seen it. But if you want to take a look at it, it's interesting from the perspective that it goes into the fact that a public record can exist on a private device.
Yes.
So it's kind of interesting, and I think I still can find it if nobody else can, but I did send it to the clerk, so...
Sounds excellent. Good. Appreciate that. Yeah. Good information. Thank you. Public participation. Is anyone here from the public that would like to address the council for any reason? It's your time to, if you've got something on your mind, we're happy to hear you. We're good? Okay. We will adjourn then. Thank you, everyone.